Okay, I think we're, I think we're good to go. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the NAGS Head Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, February eighteenth. The first item of business will be the approval of our agenda.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, I think what we need to do, we do need to amend the agenda.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah, so just very briefly, the second item that's on your agenda related to text amendment, they, I spoke with them briefly, they would like to table that if it's okay with the planning board. They feel like they need to work with staff on some more things before it comes forward, so.
Fine with me.
I move that we'll amend the agenda to eliminate that second item.
So we have a motion to amend and table that item?
Can I make a motion to approve the amended?
You may. Do we need a motion? We need a second and a, right, that's fine.
And second.
Right, great. So we have a motion to amend the agenda to table item two, the Blue Moon, Bar Lounge, and a second. You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Moving on then, the agenda's appro, you know, it's been approved with that one change. So the next item of business will be public comment and audience response. Do we have anybody who wants to speak this morning to us? Okay, great. We'll move on from that then and talk about the approval of our minutes from January twenty-first.
That motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-one and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Moving on then to our action items. And so item one will be our first consideration of a text amendment request submitted by Attorney Kraus Gray on behalf of NAGS Head eighty-seven LLC to increase the number of fueling dispensers available at fueling stations and to increase the potential size of any convenience store associated with a fueling station within the C-two general commercial zoning district.
Yes. Thank you. Good morning, planning board members. As was noted, this is consideration of a text amendment to the UDO. This has been submitted by Attorney Kraus Gray, who is with us today on behalf of NAGS Head eighty-seven LLC as it pertains to fueling stations within the C-two general commercial zoning district. Fueling stations are currently permitted in the C-two district as well as the C-five, the historical character commercial zoning district. In both districts, it's permitted via the special use process, and we have supplemental regulations that are in section seven point two zero, and I included that as an attachment within your packet. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to modify fueling stations within the C-two district only, so not looking to make changes to the C-five, just the C-two. And what those changes would encompass is increasing the maximum number of fuel dispensers from four dispensers to eight dispensers, establishing a definition for fueling dispenser, increasing the maximum convenience store size that's associated with a fueling station from thirty-five hundred square feet to forty-eight hundred square feet, and establishing a minimum lot size of one acre for the development of the fueling station that meets this criteria. In 2023, when we were going through, looking at our historic character area and working on the amendments for the C-five district, the Board of Commissioners adopted revisions to seven point two zero, and these revisions, I've included a copy of that in your packet as well, but part of that revision was capping the number of fuel dispensers to four, purposely creating a minimum convenience store size of thirty-five hundred square feet to accommodate the uses that we already had here in town within the C-two as well as the C-five district. That, those amendments were done, at that time it was noted to maintain consistency with NAGS Head's character and planning objectives. We did an analysis of fueling stations at the time. That chart is in your packet. We have Stop Quick up at the north end of town. They're on a point eight acre site. They are zoned C-two. Seven-Eleven, point seven acres, duck through, point eight. Also, the other duck through down around Lakeside is point five acres. The gas station, everybody refers to it as Wally's, down around Wellbo Junction, that's point three acres. The Quality Plus and the Sunoco were both on the Causeway. They are point eight acres. And then the Sunoco Valero, that is one acre. And the number of dispensers for all of these vary between two and four. For our staff analysis, the 2023 amendments, as I stated, those were intentionally adopted to ensure that fueling stations remain small-scale and compatible with the town's character, consistent with the community's vision as outlined in the comprehensive plan. Larger fueling stations with expanded convenience stores and additional dispensers do not align with the town's established land use policies and development goals. And we included Land Use Policy LU One to ensure the character of NAGS Head is preserved, a single-family residential beach community with ties to its natural environment. This is defined by: Buildings with a residential scale and appearance with low heights, small footprints that are designed to reflect the heritage of NAGS Head, and commercial development that serves the needs of the residents and visitors but respects the goal of the community related to design and appearance. The proposed one-acre minimum lot size presents a concern, given that all but one of the town's existing fueling stations are located on lots smaller than one acre. Again, I would note that the proposed amendments are simply for the C-two, not the C-five, but if the proposed one-acre minimum were to be adopted, the existing fueling stations in town would become non-conforming with regard to lot size. Additionally, the Board of Commissioners unanimously adopted the current fueling station regulations on June seventh, 2023, reaffirming the town's commitment to maintaining appropriately scaled commercial development. So based upon this analysis, staff recommends denial of the proposed amendment as it's being requested. And I have provided some excerpts from the UDO as action by the planning board should you be inclined to adopt this amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, we do have Kraus Gray available this morning.
Kelly, I've got a question.
Sure.
It says the proposed one-acre minimum lot size, is there a maximum proposed lot size?
There was not a maximum. No, sir. Just, just a one-acre minimum.
Anybody else have questions for Kelly? Mr. Gray, did you want to speak with us this morning?
Good morning. I'm Kraus Gray. I represent NAGS Head eighty-seven LLC, which is the applicant in this particular matter. As we set forth in our application, the underlying reasoning for the request of this text amendment is that your present Q, present current UDO does not provide a definition of a fuel dispenser, so we wanted to put that in there to make it clear what you mean by that. Secondly, we wanted to provide a clear definition while also increasing the number of available fuel dispensers to meet the practical requirements of a modern fueling station. Kelly was very good about providing to you information about all of the existing fueling stations that you have within this town. I'm old enough that I can remember when most of those were built, and most all of those are well in excess of twenty years old. In fact, most of those are in excess of that by far. Unfortunately, as time goes by, the needs of the communities change, and the needs of the commercial community as well changes. And in today's modern world, a fueling station of two or four fuel dispensing stations simply is not adequate for the needs of the communities. Think about the number of cars that you had on the road thirty years ago, and we may not like it, but think about the number of cars that are on that bypass in June, July, and August. It's a different world in many ways. Now, we're not recommending that you change the character of this town. That's not the purpose of this. I understand, I've been before this board, I've been before the commissioners, that everybody within this town really appreciates what I'm going to call the NAGS Head look. It deals with size, it deals with how the structures look themselves, but design standards is different than what we're talking about today. Today we're talking about simply amending the ordinance to allow something that is slightly different than what you already have. You already have limitations. One of the points that Ms. Wyatt has made to you, and forgive me if I occasionally slip and call her Kelly, that's just, again, I'm old, she's not, but I've dealt with her a number of years, much to her regret, probably. Yes, if we go to the one acre, what does that do? That does create the potential that the gas stations, you already have fueling stations, excuse me, not gas stations, would be potentially, how to say this, well, let me say it this way. If we go back to 2023 and look at the minutes of the meetings and look at the memorandum as prepared by Ms. Wyatt and submitted to the town, of the six fueling stations that she has delineated, she specifically states, "Staff acknowledges that this language," we're talking about the 2023 change, "would create a site nonconformity for the existing fueling stations located at seven-three-oh-nine South Virginia Trail, Wally's, and three-six-four-three South Croatan Highway, seven-eleven, given their frontage on NC twelve. However, should this ordinance be adopted, nothing in this language would preclude these businesses from continuing to operate in their current configuration." The point I'm simply making to you is the change to acreage is basically designed to make sure that not every little spot can come before you and ask to put a fueling station in, but secondly, to provide sufficient room for the more, I don't want to say modern, but how the things have changed economically for fueling stations. The 2023 ordinance was adopted, and therefore, two of your existing six fueling stations are now nonconformity. So creating a nonconformity, which is one of the items that Ms. Wyatt set forth, is not something new, it's something you've already done, you being the commissioners, subject to the planning boards lots. So I respectfully submit to you, yes, this is a, not going to be a popular item, I get that, but at the same point in time, it is something that the needs of this community now are different than what they were twenty years ago, when most of these stations were built. And you still have the capacity to keep the facility looking with the NAGS Head look. You know, what is it that NAGS Head has? It's the ability for you to control the design of facilities to keep that character that you want. And included within that is the concept that how it's configured on the lot is subject to ultimate approval from your organization, the town, including you, the planning board. Bottom line is, we think this is a good thing for the town. We think it meets your land use plan because your land use plan specifically says it must meet the needs of the residents and the visitors. And the small stations, given the volume of traffic that has now increased so dramatically, doesn't meet those needs. We respectfully request that you move forward and recommend approval of this to the commissioners. And I'm here to answer any questions, and we have other people from NAGS Head eighty-seven available as well.
Good morning. I do have a couple of questions, and I want to point out that the clarification, the definition of a fuel dispenser is appreciated. Thank you for that. I've lived here probably not as long as most of the folks that I serve with, but I've been here since 2003. I've seen the area grow, but for some reason, I'm not understanding how the current number of fuel dispensers are not adequate. I don't see any indication of, like it was in seventy-three during the oil embargo, when cars were lined up and you had odd and even plates and all of that stuff. I remember that very well. But what I don't see is any indication of the need not being met with what we currently have. And you've mentioned the fact that we're not keeping up with the needs. What are those needs specifically that we're not keeping up with?
Alls I can give you is anecdotal. I do not have any research data to support this. Anecdotally, I'm being told by people who have the larger stations that what is occurring is people are coming to the newer stations and not going to the older stations for a number of reasons. One of which is the convenience store size and what is available within the convenience store, but secondly, they're able to get more people in there, volume-wise, in where their pumps are as compared to here. Now, it's merely anecdotal. I'm not going to sit here and raise my hand and say this is truth, the whole truth, because frankly, I don't know. It's purely anecdotal, but the logic of it's pretty good. Yes, you have six smaller stations, ranging anywhere from two to four dispensaries. How backlog are they at this stage? I don't think they're backlogged much at all, because frankly, I don't think people are going to them. But again, I can't certify that to you, sir.
Do, do you think that whether the station is a modern station, or whether the fueling area is one that's twenty years old, for me, from my standpoint, what drives me into a fueling station is up there on that sign. What's the cost per gallon? And if I see that cost per gallon, the least, I'm going into that station. And that's my draw.
I don't disagree with that, sir. Other than when my wife was traveling with me, if she did not like the look of that gas station, I don't care what the price was.
Right.
I was going past it till we got to a station that she thought she would be okay to go to the restroom then.
Sure.
So.
Understand that.
But your point's well taken. The price is the major component.
Right.
But I think you're going to find, if you did a price analysis, which... I am familiar with a couple of the stations that have recently been built within the county, and I know the analysis that they did concerning what their prices would be as compared to the prices of existing facilities was such that they were very comfortable that they would be making a profit, given the prices that they were able to charge because they're dispensing your fuel. And like many things, the more of a volume you can do, the greater you're able to reduce your prices based on that volume. Now, again, purely anecdotal, I'm not going to tell you that that is statistically accurate. It's just information that was provided to me by a different client at a different time a couple of years ago.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have a question that's somewhat related to Mr. Gwynn's question, I think, and that is, in the reason for the request, you mentioned something you've just talked about along with tradit, you know, the modern fueling station provisions, but also it mentions additional products and services. Can you expand a little bit on what those additional, in addition to regular convenience store items, what the additional products and services might be?
I can't tell you what, I don't, I have no idea of what may go on to any particular site, but most of the larger facilities that have now expanded in size go beyond just your normal prepackaged food and baggage. go beyond just your normal prepackaged food and bag of chips and some popcorn. And in the coolers, you go get a beer or something. Most of them now have expanded to where they're doing more of the fountain-style drinks, coffee, you know, three to four different kinds of coffee machines. But also, some of them do prepare what I'll call onsite preparation. Try that again. On-site preparation of food products. Not to say that anyone would do that, because it's subject to your rules. But that is what we are seeing as a pretty consistent new station concept.
So, would you think, sorry, so would you think that is probably why we're leaning towards the expanded size of the, of the convenience store?
Yes.
Okay.
The, speaking to that a little further, the addition of the square footage to the building ultimately will be more profitable than the addition of fuel dispensers. The least profitable thing that these convenience stores sell is gas. The most profitable thing they sell is coffee and fountain soft drinks. 60 years ago, 7-Eleven introduced the Slurpee. And when they did, that became the most profitable thing that was sold in a 7-Eleven. Then they rolled out coffee. Then they put roller grills on the counter and sold hot dogs. All of the food and drink that is either dispensed or prepared on-site is what makes a convenience store profitable. They're told what to sell the beer for. They're told what to sell the cigarettes for. They have lots of latitude in food service. So, I can, I can see the need for the additional square footage of the store as making it a more profitable venture. I don't know that it needs more pumps to bring people in if it's modern and they know they can go in and get a sandwich. And that's the ultimate goal.
I'm not sure if you asked me a question or if you want me to make a statement.
No, wrong.
I'm not disagreeing with the concept that fuel itself, there is a set amount that you make per gallons of, between what the jobber charges you and what you then dispense it at. There's literally a set number. And you have some room to play with that number up and down depending on what your competition is doing. And I honestly cannot agree or disagree with your concept that most of the profits made from the convenience store items, let's call them that, primarily coffee and soft drinks. I don't doubt it, but I just don't have any data that tells me one way or another on that, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? Mr. Gray. Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Let's discuss.
Truthfully, it seems to me like the Wawa's, the Sheetz, those that basically have a convenience store that sell gas versus a gasoline station that has a convenience store. We're, we're all trying to reach to the middle, which is staying competitive with, with convenience stores that produce food products where the profit lies. I understand that, but given the fact that there, there isn't to me a demonstrated need for more fuel dispensers in, in NAGS Head, I don't, I don't see the need for that right now. I don't see any indication that we're having a problem that needs to be addressed. So, I'm...
I'm, I'm, I'm right down the same road. You know, the, the mission creep of fuel station is a little bit concerning and the, and the lack of definition in this, in this amendment. My concern is not just the increased size of the sale of the, at the convenience store, which is the most profitable sector in that portion of sales. But it's also other services. There's been a spite of increase in car washes in the area, which is also a, a, a source of income to these type of businesses. It's, it's the same kind of sector. But underlying all that is fuel and fuel efficiency standards, size of tanks, habits of people has meant that people spend less time at fuel stations now than they did 30 and 40 years ago when many of these stations were first thought of. As well, that the, the, the types of fuels haven't changed at all. There's really not a great deal more on the plate. There's, what's, the new side of it is electric, and electric isn't in this application. It is not defined. So, I kind of wonder why. Unless, but the other side of it is, is, is this. The existing policy that we have created nonconformity in existing buildings. Let's extend further into that market and make not only the two nonconforming, more nonconforming, but like, like everything else, nonconforming as well. So, the extension of, of, of lack of conformity without an overriding need that is prevalent by lines at gas stations, I'm, I'm, it does concern me. Gives me cause. Gives me pause.
Speaking to the average square footage, the average Wawa is 4,000 square feet. Just as a point of reference.
It might be helpful, Kelly, if I could ask you quickly to speak to, to the design control, the idea of actually controlling the design of this as well. Because I'm concerned when we turn to our land use plan about, and the NAGS Head look and all that, how much control we really could have. And a lot of these, at least the stations I'm envisioning, they, they all look alike. And they're, and they're really bright, and they're really, you know, so we're, we're excited about the Dark Knight Sky Initiative and different things. And yes, while this is in front of us, I'd like to, just quickly, if you could.
Sure. So, any, any new convenience store developed as part of a fueling station would have to meet the commercial architectural design standards. And they have two mechanisms to do that. They can meet the requirements under Division Two, which just sets forth like hard and fast, black and white criteria. Then the other method to do that is to go through a point system where you accumulate points based upon residential design, where you're doing things like adding cedar shake, siding, wraparound porches, things of that nature. The gas stations that we currently have now, I do think were probably in place prior to our commercial design standards. So, I don't know that any of those existing ones meet that. I don't want to say that the ones, the gas stations that I have seen, the larger ones, they all kind of have a consistent standard prototype or model. I'm not saying that that couldn't be altered to meet our commercial design standards. I just think that it would take a lot of effort and potentially be difficult when you look at what's out there now, what it would take to meet our design standards. But I, I, I'm not saying they couldn't. I just think it could be difficult to meet our standards.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Kind of hearing some consensus. Are we ready to?
Yeah.
Unless anybody has further questions or comments. I keep coming back to the, to the comp plan and to the idea that, you know, of our character, smaller, you know, sized businesses, locally owned and operated businesses. And I, and I would be concerned about the impact something like this might have on those other smaller locally owned operations as well. So...
I would like to make a motion then.
Okay.
That we deny this text amendment request.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, everybody. Thank you. We appreciate it, your time. Sure, no problem. Okay, so we will move on to a report on the Board of Commissioners' actions from February 5th, please.
Make this a little bit better. There we go. So, we don't have a whole lot to talk about here from the last Board of Commissioners' meeting. There were several recognitions and two retirements. So, you may want to go back and watch the YouTube if you haven't. All the recognitions and the retirements were very nice. But in terms of what was related to planning, I gave the director's report, and I provided information about ADUs as to where the planning board currently was in terms of what there was consensus on and what was remaining. The Board of Commissioners did agree that a joint workshop would probably be useful here pretty soon because we're getting close. So, we're going to talk about that a little bit today. If you've read the report, there's not a whole lot additional. But I do think just more conversation today and getting prepared for hopefully a joint workshop soon with regard to ADUs is going to be the next step there. Staff also provided a presentation related to residential yard signs, talking about the types of residential signs that are allowed currently, temporary yard signs versus permanent yard signs, what we have available in terms of what's allowed on your lot when you've got active building permits, how once that building permit is CO'd, after a certain timeframe, those signs need to be removed, what we allow in terms of on a site if the property is for sale, for lease, things like that. And then the types of signage that we allow, which are permanent in terms of non-commercial identification signs, so like your, the name of your cottage, which many people have. And then some commercial signage, which is predominantly used for identifying the rental company, the rental number, things like that. So, just talked about that in the context of content neutrality. The board or the town attorney did feel like our current regulations were consistent and content neutral. But he did say that he would revisit it and look at it and just verify that we're on track and, and how we're handling things is still adequate. So, when we hear back from him, we'll, we'll share that with the board as well. I think that's it in terms of VOC actions. That's all we have for that.
Great. Questions, anybody? Okay, moving on then, unless there are town updates. Anybody have anything they need to ask about? Let's move on to discussion items then, and we will continue said discussions about accessory dwelling units, please.
Sure. Not a whole lot more to, to add. I've just clarified in your staff report the things that we did have consensus on, some new definitions, talking about attached and detached, how they can be confusing, spelling out the definitions for attached, which may be using accessory apartment for that, detached, using backyard cottage for that. Both types of ADUs, we want those to be available for both long-term and short-term occupancy. Revising or a proposed revision to partial home, short-term rental, to kind of create some alignment there given that the short-term partial home rentals are essentially attached ADUs. And then definition for sleeping room. We had consensus at the planning board level to consider attached ADUs to be allowed townwide, to allow detached ADUs to be allowed townwide, but on lots that were greater than 16,000 square feet in area. That was going to be consistent with where we allow our large residential dwellings. And again, to allow both long-term and short-term. With regard to the development standards, we focused on what's subordinate, what's going to make that accessory aspect subordinate to the principal. And I believe we had consensus that maximum size of 800 square feet or 50% of the principal structure, whichever is less, was acceptable for subordinate. And looking at a parking standard, which was like that for Kill Devil Hills, of one parking space per ADU. And then if you have more than one bedroom, you have to provide another parking space. Our definition limits it to two bedrooms, so max in any scenario would be two parking spaces. Like I said, we did give this update to the Board of Commissioners at their February 5th meeting. They talked about it for a little bit, didn't go into great detail, but I did provide a link to the meeting where they discussed it. I thought if planning board members had a chance, it might be helpful for them to go and just listen to that conversation. And I think what, what primarily came out of, what I heard them say was that they really want to focus on not encouraging more short-term rentals. They obviously want to focus on long-term for the purpose of affordable workforce housing. I had mentioned that we hadn't necessarily explored deed restrictions for ADUs. And there was some conversation about how if we're issuing zoning permits for ADUs, is there an enforcement mechanism through the zoning permit to require that it be long-term? So, that's something there likely is. It would be cumbersome, but I, I think there is. And that's going to be something that if the board wants to continue with that, we would just need to talk about with the town attorney. What's going to be the best way for a zoning department, a planning department, to try to enforce long-term versus short-term? But that did come up, and then there seemed to be agreement that we are getting close to needing a joint workshop before we go too much further. That's really all I have on that update for you today. So, again, conversation, questions, we're, we're available.
Thank you. I, I'll jump in if everyone doesn't mind. I personally am really comfortable, really comfortable with the definitions. I think we've, you know, kind of honed those and honed those, and that, and they're pretty good. They make sense and they're helpful. I think the, you know, the issue of long-term versus short-term is sort of the elephant in the room. You know, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a real issue. And I think, like Kelly said, we're going to have to get some guidance on that. You know, we don't want to go out and do something that's going to create a lot more particularly, well, any more partial home, short-term rentals, or the detached, there seems to be a lot of concern about detached, backyard apartment type, backyard dwelling, turning into short-term rentals as well. So, along those lines, I too would like, I heard some concern and discussion about setbacks and those kind of things when it comes to the detached. And so, I'm wondering if we can sort of explore that a little somehow and try to zero in on something there. I, I heard a fair amount of concern about that issue. So, can you help us, Kelly, to, to consider some options regarding, you know, how we could put something about that on our menu? Because as of right now, I feel like we've been moving in the direction of allowing attached, detached ADUs throughout the town. I mean, that's what we're, keep spelling out month after month, right, on lots of a certain size. Now, I really hope we haven't voted on this and said this is our final recommendation, but that's the direction we've been going in for quite a while. So, I think I'm... So I think I'm hearing we need to maybe be absolutely sure about, you know, the impact, setbacks and the impact on neighbors and that sort of thing.
I think one thing that we can talk about is when you say accessory structure, that comes with reduced setbacks. An accessory structure is allowed to be five feet from your side and rear property line. And if there's, and it has to be in the rear. It can't be in front of your principal structure, so it's got to be in the rear. Five feet from your side and rear property line. And if there's any habitable space in it, so if you're using that accessory structure as like a workshop or something like that, then it's got to meet the principal front yard setback. I think if you're concerned about having detached accessory dwelling units being long-term and having effects on neighbors, or short-term for that matter, maybe even more so, you might want to consider requiring that any detached ADU meet principal structure setbacks. So that's going to give them more of a side yard buffer and a notable rear yard buffer.
I also have a question as far as separation. If you have an existing, or if you have, the existing policy on accessory dwellings, is there any definition or clearance on what degree of separation, how far these buildings have to be apart? And Mike, what I'm looking at is if you're going to have an ADU, if we are going to build this hypothetical and you're going to have people residing in it for perhaps a long period of time, access and egress issues are going to be in it, but also for people that are providing services and to make it pathways more understandable, make it logical that this is going on.
Yeah, so right now, you're going to have, in the worst-case scenario for an accessory structure with no habitable, you're going to have a ten-foot separation because they're going to be five feet from the side yard. So that's, you're going to get, have ten feet there. If you are in the C2 or R3 district, your principal side yards are going to be eight and eight. So that's going to be even more separation there if you have habitable. In a scenario where maybe you have an existing accessory structure with habitable, your, your, any new accessory dwelling unit is going to have to meet minimum separation requirements for fire purposes. And that would be determined by the building inspector. It's going to have to be at least ten feet. So there could be potential scenarios where you've got existing structures, you have a new structure coming onboard, and that's going to be regulated more so by the separation. I don't know if that answers your question.
I guess it kind of does, but you know, the other, the other, how does that, does that, when you get into things like stairways and walkways and things like that, does that lean on anything? Or does that affect any of that geometry that you defined?
So all of that, any type of front porch decking, stairway, entryway, all of that has, would have to meet the principal structure setback as well. There's an exclusion that allows uncovered wood stairs to encroach three feet into, but it's very, I mean, I assume we would continue to allow that.
Can I ask an unrelated question to geometry? How, if, if an ADU is, we're trying to promote long-term versus short-term, when things get going, how do you actually enforce that?
So I've been thinking a little bit about this, and if we were to get to a place where we were allowing attached and detached ADUs, let's say for the detached, it is a hard and fast. If it's detached, it has to be long-term only. We're going to be issuing a zoning permit and a building permit for that. So that in and of itself is going to give us sort of the mechanism to make a spreadsheet or a list of where we have these things. The zoning permit would be conditioned for long-term rental. It would have to spell out exactly what that meant. But then it's going to become an enforcement requirement on staff beyond that. I think it would just be, obviously, our code enforcement officer having to make a more concerted effort to keep an eye out on these detached ADUs. If a property owner were able to provide us with a lease agreement or some type of tenant document, that would be great. We could perhaps ask for that, but I think ultimately, at the end of the day, it's going to just be through our enforcement, our code enforcement.
Which, I'll just comment, like, so many things that can come down to basically a complaint-driven situation as well. Which, you know, that's an ongoing dynamic in town and not fun, I'm sure, for staff or for any of us. You know, we don't want to create a situation where, you know, but, but I think people, I mean, we, we've heard concerns for years on attached ADUs as well. It, you know, short-term, all kinds of things, right? So, I mean, people tend to keep an eye on their neighbors in our town, so I just throw it out there. I'm not even judging whether it's good or bad, but it exists.
Yeah, and when you think about, you know, if you're looking at these detached units being on lots that are sixteen thousand square feet or greater, and you have to meet principal structure setbacks, and you're going to have to provide stormwater management for that increased lot coverage, I don't know how many we're going to see.
Right.
On top of that, I will say, I think, and maybe I've misunderstood the comment, but there's, I have heard some comments about special districts. And I will say that the SPD 20 and the SED 80 are our special environmental districts. And so in the SPD 20, your lot size is twenty thousand square feet. In the SED 80, your minimum lot size is eighty thousand square feet. Regardless of the square footage, our code says you can only have one detached accessory dwelling unit. So there's no scenario where you're going to have multiple detached dwelling units simply because your lot can accommodate it. You can only have one.
So Kelly, is it possible, if you have a detached, permitted detached cottage in the back and that's rented long-term, is it possible that you could also do short-term partial in your house?
That's a conversation that we should have.
Yeah.
Right now, it, we don't specifically say you can have one or the other, but not both, do we? We do. So if we wanted to cap it as saying you can have one, you can, you can have detached or attached, but you can't have them both. That's a conversation.
I, I kind of wonder, this is to get into the restrictive nature of people having applications and it following a process and creating a little bit of space between, let's call it perhaps, a short-term use and a long-term use. And wondering if there isn't ways to scrape what is permissible into one power or the other. And one of the areas that I get into or am thinking about right off the top of my head is food preparation. If short-term rentals, people who use short-terms are less likely to think about preparing food. People who are longer-term is more food prep oriented. And that would be a way to scrape it into and lean it more into, let's call it, not, I'm thinking towards a restriction as a possibility, if you're going to apply for something with issues going on in it and it is more than, you know, beverages and a refrigerator, then maybe that be in there. And that would be clearly documented in service that applied. And I'm thinking a two-twenty line as the standard of a kitchen is a two-twenty line.
So for a detached accessory dwelling unit, it would have to meet all the criteria of a dwelling. And so part of that would be having permanent services for food preparation like that.
So, so if you were generally to build a building that is detached, it would have to have a food preparation area in it?
As an ADU.
As an, okay.
It would, and we don't.
But if you wanted to build, would you be able to do a short, a detached short-term?
Currently, no, you're not allowed to currently. Now, I think somebody would.
And that's, that's kind of what I understood, but I.
We didn't permit it.
Right. So are we thinking that we like the idea of principal, principal dwelling setbacks for ADUs?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Add that to our, add that to our menu, will you please?
I think it makes everyone more comfortable.
I do too.
And it makes sense.
Well, it does make sense. I mean, you know, it's different to put a dwelling than it is to put a tool shed theoretically.
And, and the largest concern that was brought up in the public meeting was increase of density. And, and use and density do follow similar lines, and that, that makes sense.
Yeah, I can. I, of course, I always jump in to say that, you know, the whole density discussion, you know, we've been round and round about it.
Yeah.
And I'm of the school of thought that density is density, and so is lot coverage and all those things. And building a, you know, building of, in an S, in an SED 20, a five thousand square foot house, is that different, worse, more dense than building an eighteen hundred square foot house and a six hundred and fifty square foot ADU? Nags Head style, you know? And of course, when you, and I understand people's concerns about having an ADU on their lot line, but that's what setbacks are for, and all, all neighbors aren't always happy about where someone chooses to build their primary home either. They'd rather that it not be on, you know, right on the setback. But sometimes they are, and I just, I always lean towards trying to consider people's property rights, you know? So.
On both sides.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
Growing up in Virginia Beach, there were a lot of detached ADUs at quote, the North End, north of the resort area. And they were always, not always, but usually they were long-term rental units. Some may have been winter, summer rental. But most people never had a problem. And it wasn't until this century when people started to come in and buy the old homes, flat and everything, and put up the, the, either duplexes or great big four or five thousand square foot houses. Those are reviled by most of the people, except the people who live in them, by the people that have been at the North End for a long time. So, yeah, if I was a neighbor, I would prefer the eighteen hundred square foot house and the eight hundred square foot ADU.
Me too.
Lot more charming.
Me too, so, but people vary on that, so. Okay, so is there anything else big we, or anything else you think we should address? Because at this point, we just need to frankly probably have a workshop.
Correct.
And, you know, we're not, this is just a discussion item.
Yeah.
If you think there's anything else we need to talk about specifically?
I don't. Joe and I can put this in ordinance form so that when we go into the workshop, we can see what it looks like. And then I think the conversation about, do we want to limit the number of opportunities you can have on any single property? Do you want, you know, your, your full-time resident property owner, your short-term rental below, and then your long-term rental in the backyard? How, do we want all of that or not? And that's probably a good conversation for the workshop.
That's three housekeeping units, right?
Correct. It would be.
That's a lot.
It's a lot.
And parking becomes an issue. I mean, I can't even, I can't even do the math. And septic will, will control too, so. Okay, great. Well, unless anybody else has anything they want to add about the ADU discussion, then we'll move along.
Okay.
To Kelly's report.
Which we.
We probably don't have much new and, much different.
Uh, let me, let me look at it real quick. I don't think we have anything.
Please be sure there's nothing. So we probably will, off topic a little bit, we probably will see something moving forward, a different text amendment for the property next to Blue Moon.
Yes, so what that was is they were talking about, they really try to want to create a use category where that detached building is essentially serving as an accessory to the principal and not its own standalone principal. Where the idea would be that if you're, if you go into Blue Moon proper and you're told that it's an hour wait, you, you take your reservation thing and you go sit in the accessory structure, and perhaps you have your drink and your appetizer there, and then when you're called, you go back. Not, not having them operate as two independent uses. That is a little bit different than what was applied for and what was envisioned. And so probably better that we talk more about it before it comes to you again.
Well, and I digress a little bit, but, but speaking of that issue, and, you know, it's commercial, it's a whole different thing with accessory, but same thing, it comes through my brain every once in a while about accessory dwellings in residential. I have seen a few, I don't know exactly how many there are, but I know of a couple at least, that people can get pretty creative too. And you can, you know, you can build yourself a tunnel or a walkway or something, and you can make your, your structures attached, right? And so to my way of thinking, the clearer we are, and we don't want to, you know, the unintended consequence of creating situations where people are getting real creative and building ugly stuff that doesn't make sense just so that they can say it's attached, you know? I mean, right?
No, it happens.
Yeah.
Creating breezeways and different types of.
Right.
And good.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's just an unintended consequence, and to me, it's another reason why we should consider the detached and have it be, you know, sensible, and I don't believe there's going to be a bunch of them.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
So, and it may, you know, may help a little.
Well, no, at three hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot to build it, that is going to limit.
And then all the other controlling things, anyway.
That's on the low side.
So sorry, I got off track. I went back to ADU, so.
But, but I think that, you know, the further clarification of setbacks is also, that's, that's, that makes sound a great deal of sense. And I don't, I'm, I'm kind of sorry we didn't think of it before this.
Yeah, what took us so long?
Yeah.
Don't answer that, Kelly.
We always thought it was principal structure.
Right. Oh, yeah. That's true.
Thank you for supporting our, our lack of effort.
We just didn't bother writing, we just didn't bother writing it down. Okay, thank you.
So, won't talk too long, but there has been a lot of movement with our decentralized wastewater management plan update with regard to the Septic Health Advisory Committee. So you've probably heard us talk about it. We've got these groundwater loggers out there in various locations within the town. We put those in and we were notified that these groundwater loggers were water-resistant. They were not waterproof. So in areas where we had really high groundwater, these water loggers became inundated and were not working properly. On top of that, we had some that were on dragable areas, were near accessways. So we put the, like, the metal water meter lid on there, which was causing some issues with Bluetooth connectivity and burned out the battery. So, you know, lesson learned. And so now we're trying to correct those things. So we have gone out, Joe partnered with Connor, our environmental planner, and went out with some creative tools, and they have now elevated all of these groundwater loggers above ground about two feet. So you'll now see some PVC pipes setting out there now. Those are our elevated groundwater loggers. We've got some. Those are our elevated groundwater loggers, we've got some reflective tape, some stickers and things like that coming to put on there so that people know what they are. We have a QR code that links to our website, so if people are really curious, they can scan that QR code. It will take them to the website for groundwater loggers, and eventually hopefully we'll have some cool maps to go along with. Um, there has been some progress there.
Who would've thought that they weren't waterproof?
Water log, water loggers.
Water log.
When they stop working, then they're, then it's wet.
Right.
Right. Then groundwater is hot.
That's a dead giveaway.
Like when your rain gauge overflows, right?
It, it's, one of the things that's kind of, that brings this, this brought to mind, um, the re- revitalization of QR codes. Cause they were kind of becoming a little bit more of a doorstop, and now they're jumping right back into it again. Is there a thought maybe of, one of the, one of the things that does come to mind is water outflows? If there was a QR code on those outflows that would yield, um, a lead toward, there's the state, the county does a reasonable job. At, there's a site that's available so you can find out what the reports were. And, and, and there's a little, there's a teeny bit of scheduling information as well, you know, so that not the, I guess is parallel to this. You know, what is there? Because they're really, all that, all that's there is stay away from this.
So, Joe can speak to this more, yes, ideally, once we get all of our information in, we're going to have, um, so our groundwater loggers and our water quality loggers all run off of Hydromet Cloud. And so Joe's really smart, and he's got all the knowledge. How we can take the Hydromet Cloud and web mapping and GIS and, and create mapping where you can click on these locations and actually see like real-time data of whatever, what the groundwater is, these water quality loggers, they're gonna, they're giving us feedback on nitrates. And so, you know, you think about onsite septic, elevated groundwater, increased nitrates, we're hand sampling for Intero. Maybe eventually we can start to see some trends. But his brain knows how to do that and talk about it, and I do not.
All right, Joe, you're up.
Let's talk about your brain, Joe.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's pretty complicated, so I don't wanna like, um, pretend like I've done this before, um, but it's.
Your brain or the?
No, this project, but, like, we have all the data that's coming into this Hydromet Cloud, so it exists in this cloud. You know, all the data is, is logged, and then it has like a web map application that shows it. And then sort of over here, we're collecting all the septic data with the, um, like our Bad Alf, it's our GPS receiver unit. So now when Connor does inspections, he has a, you know, a, a Bad Alf that basically tells us exactly where that septic tank is. And we, you know, ca- capture where the drain field is. We had Ella, who was our intern here for a while, who was pulling permit data and inspection reports from Derrick County. So eventually we'll, you know, have all of the locations of, of septic tanks and, you know, drain fields. And then sort of join all of that information, um, from the inspection reports and permit data. So that could be something you could see on your, you know, on the parcel GIS, um, or it could kind of be in its own web map. But I guess sort of the concept with the Hydromet stuff is, you know, we'd have all the septic data and information such as, you know, here's your septic tank, built in nineteen eighty-five, it was inspected in twenty twenty-three and pumped out, cause they got the credit, and you can start having all that information on there. And then we'll have all this, these water loggers all over town, you know, telling you what the water level is at certain points. And then how, um, you know, at, at certain points, like the nitrates and, and the water quality information. So hopefully we're gonna, you know, we're gonna take, we're gonna create an API which will, it's a program interface that will communicate between the two, the RGIS and then this Hydromet Cloud. So it will, you know, auto put all this information from the Hydromet Cloud into our Septic Health map. So we can just see it as layers together, you know, just like zoning and parcels will see that.
Really cool, I mean, cause it's import, it's really important.
Yeah.
And, you know, and so the only way that you, you know that a septic field has, or septic tank has been pumped is if they apply for the, the gift, is that right?
Well, we, we can pull inspection reports from, um, from the county too. So like if, if we've done it through our Septic Health Initiative, Connor's done it, and, and, or, um, one of our contractors that he works with sort of, you know, and log it, and we have all that information, or if they went and did a repair and got a permit from Derrick County, you know, so we sort of have both of those. Um, you know, there are some challenges, especially like how fast it can be done, you know, there's a lot of septic tanks. And, um, we're sort of limited by, as you said, people who, you know, give us permission to, you know, do the inspection and collect the data where it is. So we'll probably hit like a tipping point of, of sort of people, you know, same issue with the Septic Health Program generally, where only so many people know about it and wanna do it, and then sort of everybody else, we won't. But we're building this out, and, um, you know, once we put these last couple, uh, water level, or, um, water quality loggers, we got four that we're gonna drill, four more that the DWMP recommends that we still have to do. Then we'll look to sort of do this API, and it, you know, as the septic, um, data continues to be collected, we'll be able to see what we can see, um, but.
Pretty cool.
You know, I, I guess from my perspective, like, eventually, hopefully, we'll be able to see, oh, you know, this, there's a rain event, and you see sort of the, the water quality, you know, spike as, as poor because stormwater runoff. But if there's not a rain event, which we know from the water levels, what, you know, how, how much rain or not. And, you know, we can look at an area and see, you know, all of these septic tanks are from, you know, however old and haven't been inspected, and we have a water quality issue, so potentially we can target this area, you know, with policy or, or whatever.
There's, there's also been kind of down that road, the policy, and one of the things I think about is, um, retention ponds and, you know, drainage on a lot. One of the things that, that we've, I've heard talk about is the Goldilocks, um, effect. Where a small rain event will, will, you know, wash things out a little bit. A huge rain event will wash things out a lot, and then you have that middle category, and that, that's really a lot more environmentally effective casting out the more, the things that, that are not as preferable. Because they, they tend to go further and are pushed farther by that middle range. As it is right now, a lot of times people think that during big rain events, that, that is when there's more environmental, um, hedging into pushing, had, quite, things that could be hazardous or unwanted around, but really, there's so much dilution that it, it wanes, it, it wanes very quickly. And that would, you, what you're describing would yield data points where that, maybe even figure out what that is.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, um, at, at certain points, we'll be able to see what the quality is and what the water level is, and sort of make educated guesses. I guess, I feel like my role is to mostly just get all the data and like kind of build the vehicle, and then let people who are, you know, biologists or engineers kind of figure out how to use it and, and draw intelligent analysis.
How, how many of these water quality loggers are there out there being used?
Um, there'll be six total with the four new ones, yeah, and I think there's fifteen water levels across town.
How many, how many qua- water quality loggers?
There'll be six once we do these four, the four that we're going to drill, the four new ones. So we'll have six quality across town, and then Connor also does, um, sampling too, at different locations.
I was gonna ask, what area around that logger is being evaluated? How, how far can it effectively go out and test that water quality?
I don't know, um, like, ha, you know, as, as far as.
So.
It's, it's, it's in the ground, they drill, you know, a hole and kind of place this well, and, you know, the quality logger is, is just sort of sitting right there. So the idea was we would, you know, we picked these sites to where they were far away from sort of other septic tanks. So we're not getting like a point source pollution type. But, uh, you know, sort of like the area that it is impacting, I don't know, I think it would be pretty complicated to understand like how the underground water flows.
The question I'm, I'm looking to have answered is how do you select a site to put the water quality logger? What, what are the requirements that says this is a good place for this logger?
Um, yeah, I can, I'll, I'll try, but it might, you know, I think it was, it was recommended in the DW, WMP at certain locations. Obviously, our ownership or ability to access the site is, is a major sort of criteria of that. So, you know, whether it was town and NAGS head owned, or we have some sort of permission, but Kelly, you got it.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything he said, so, I mean, we are, we know South NAGS head has elevated groundwater.
Yes.
So, you know, any town-owned site in South NAGS head where we have the ability to access it, you know, that's, that was identified. I believe there's a water quality logger near, uh, Fire Station Twenty-One, obviously we own that, right? There's one over near, um, Jockeys Ridge. So, uh, I believe it was just, like Joe said, areas where we know that there could potentially be concerns. Or areas like David Ryan is doing a stormwater management project at one of our beach accesses. So we're going to be putting one of our new loggers there, because it will be informative to his stormwater management project as well. So it's, there's, there's no, uh, set criteria. It's accessibility for us, and then looking out long-term, talking about planning's needs, um, the town engineer's needs. You know, are there areas where we might be looking for grants down the road where this could be helpful? There's, there's no black and white criteria, it's just, it's sitting down with staff and trying to determine the best locations.
Okay, thank you.
Did that help?
Yeah, it did.
Anybody else have questions? And Kelly, you were finished with your report, I think, correct?
I am, I've got nothing else, um.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody have anything for members' agenda? And I have nothing then, as chairman's agenda, so I will entertain a motion.
Could I make a mention?
Absolutely, in a second. All right, we are adjourned.
You said, I.
I told you to.
I was, did he?
Oh.
No, I didn't, I was just appreciating that.